Good evening. Welcome to the April 1st, 2019 meeting of the Shawnee Planning Commission. We'll start with roll call. Commissioner Montgomery.
Here.
Commissioner Roth.
Here.
Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Willoughby.
Here.
Commissioner Beenhoff is absent. Commissioner Busby is here. Commissioner Wise.
Here.
Commissioner Brayley.
Here.
Commissioner Les Smith. Commissioner Mudgeet is absent. Commissioner John Smith.
Here.
Please join me in the reciting of the Pledgeance. Pledge of Allegiance of America. Item one on the consent agenda is the, oh, hold it. Consent agenda. Item one is listed under consent items agenda. Unless there is a request to remove the item from the consent agenda, the item will be approved in one motion. Is there a request to remove the item from the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Commissioner Wise.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda items. First half recommendations.
Is there a second? Commissioner John Smith.
I second the motion.
Motion and a second to approve the consent items agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The words of the British. Wonderful! It is now approved! And if you're not watching a little bit of British Parliament, it is just amazing. Under new business, we have a proposed text amendment to the zoning ordinance for liquor-related land use? Yes, we do. Do we have the public hearing before we talk about it? Then technically, we should open a public meeting since we said we were going to have one. And then we can recess it until the May meeting? We can open it and close it. Parliamentary people here, okay. Then this is a public hearing. The public hearing is open on the text amendments. Would anyone who wishes to speak on this matter come forward? Seeing as no one has come forward, then the suggestion that we would need a motion to table? No, I don't think we table close. Commissioner Willoughby.
I make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Is there a second? It dies from a lack of second? Oh, Commissioner Wise.
I'll second the motion.
The motion is second to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Okay. So now what do we do?
I can give you a staff presentation.
That would be fit. Stephanie, would you do a staff presentation on this?
Absolutely. All right. So, as you mentioned tonight, we do have some information about proposed text amendments to the zoning ordinance related to liquor-type uses. No joke, April 1st, we do have strong beer available today in Kansas. So, I thought it was very fitting that we're talking about liquor-related uses on such a monumental day for the state. So, this text amendment talks about microbreweries, micro distilleries, breweries, distilleries, boutique alcohol, and wineries and vineyards. You'll see that there are definitions added for each of those types we go through here. And the zoning districts that are affected by this are the ag district, the commercial neighborhood district, the commercial highway district, and the CSQ district. The existing microbreweries we have in Shawnee are survey and transport, and they're right here on Johnson Drive in our downtown area in the CSQ district. And we wanted to give you an idea of how these breweries are made up. Part retail and part manufacturing, and give you the overall sizes and the number of barrels per year that they're manufacturing. Johnson County does have a requirement that 30% of their sales have to be food-related, thus why you see the 70/30 split. And I've heard that it's relatively difficult for breweries to meet that 30% of sales. So that's something I think that several breweries in Johnson County are trying to appeal.
Stephanie, excuse me if you don't mind me interrupting you.
Sure.
But that, the 30% is decided by the county?
Yes, the county has imposed that. And you can see more information on my next slide about that county regulation.
Thank you.
So you'll see here, the 70/30 also applies in the case of surveys with their retail versus manufacturing. There are about 30% retail and consumption in their building, and about 70% manufacturing. Transport across the street here, it's about 25% retail and consumption and 75% manufacturing. So this should give you an idea of those breweries. If you've been to them, you can kind of get a feel for what that space is really made up of, what those sizes feel like in real life. And that's part of the information that we use to come up with our size restrictions and regulations that you'll see in the press. This is a map of the county liquor law relating to the 30% food sales requirement. Can you all see these on your screens?
Yes.
Okay. Just making sure. You can see, we have Johnson County right up there in the pink, and we do have the 30% food sales requirement. The sort of light pink or almost white is no food sales requirement, and the very dark pink that you see in a couple counties on the western side of Kansas is no liquor by the drink. So, no liquor served there at all, I guess. So, you can see, there's a little bit more than 50% of the counties it looks like that have that 30% food sales requirement. But you can also see that there's a few counties adjacent to us, Leavenworth, Mayan Dot, and Douglas, and Shawnee County, that do not have that food sales requirement. So our current code lists distilling and blending liquors and microbreweries, and they're permitted in PI for the distilling and blending, and CH, TSQ, and PI for the microbreweries. And we don't talk about a micro distillery. We don't talk about store footages. And we don't currently permit them in the CN district or in the CH and TSQ in some cases. We wanted to change that to be a little bit more relaxed. And what we did is we came up with a category called microbrewery, micro distilleries, or other boutique liquor establishments greater than or less than 5,000 square feet to break it up on a tennis court footage that seems allowable and in character with those CN-type zoning districts and the CSQ-type districts, which are typically a little bit smaller tennis spaces. They are still allowed, but by special use permit if they're over 5,000 square feet. And keep in mind too, they're permitted in either size in CH or PI. We also wanted to note that they shall not be within 200 feet of a church or school. And later on in these amendments, we'll be defined how to measure that and we clarified state codes, which was not clarified. We also have parking requirements, and those are on a slide we have as well. So you can see what we chose to put parking requirements. A brewery or distillery is a special use in PI, which if you look back at the last table, distilling and blending liquors and microbreweries didn't really cover a full-size brewery or distillery. So we made it very clear, and we've also defined all these terms as well. We also added a winery or vineyard category into the use table and chose to allow it to be permitted in that in the proposal. And the parking requirement is similar to the microbrewery requirement because typically these wineries have large events and pretty big grounds as well. Here are the parking requirements that we use. The C19 is for a restaurant. So it's one space for each employee, plus one space for each two people. And the D2 requirement is the manufacturing requirement, which is one space for 1,000 square feet of corporate store area, or one space for each two employees. And hopefully, you guys can read these on your screens. If not, they are in your staff report. These are the definitions that we're proposing to add. And a couple things in here are just re-mentioned because we had to relocate them for numbering purposes and alphabetizing them. So you'll see a couple terms in here that aren't really related, but we have to relocate them. So we have a definition for brewery, boutique liquor establishment, which I do want to talk about really quickly. The idea is that microbreweries and micro distilleries doesn't necessarily capture all things because there's inevitably going to be something new that comes along that we haven't thought of. And we also have people that will want to start wine bars or tasting rooms and that sort of thing, and that's the intent of boutique liquor establishment to cover the types of uses. Those are very similar to the micro distillery and the microbrewery. Buffer area is relocated in alphabetical order, and core commercial area is the key clarification definition that we're adding. You may have seen on the staff report a long discussion about the state's legal requirements for core commercial areas and sort of the clarity that's needed to define that term. And for Shawnee, we adopt this term by ordinance. Then we solidify some of the measurement practices for the distance requirement of 200 feet. So by defining this as a commercial neighborhood, a commercial highway, town square, district, within Shawnee, we then define that core commercial area, and then we can measure from properties in that core commercial area. A little bit complicated, but if you're not following, we know. We've defined distillery. We've also defined microbreweries, micro distilleries, and we've relocated metaverse or central capital. And you'll see that a lot of these definitions have to do with distilleries and breweries actually relate back to the state of Kansas and mention that they have to be licensed by the state of Kansas. In order to be licensed by the state of Kansas, they have to meet certain parameters. And in order to just make it easiest for everyone, we don't need to restate the parameters to be achieved in the future. And then we're battling with, oh, well, state now says we only can produce 50,000 barrels a year, but the city says 100,000 because it used to say 100,000 in the state. This makes it a little bit more clear and easy for everyone. I think the city is fine as long as they're licensed by the state. And then lastly, we have definitions for vineyards, wineries, and required yards will be located in alphabetical order to accommodate wineries. Any questions about the definitions?
Another question, Stephanie.
Yep.
On, in section 1704.41, you talk of brewery and it's beer or cider. And it would seem to me that when we get to 17.04.200, that we're talking about microbrewery, it would seem to me we needed to add the word cider in there as well because we're talking about brewery, beer, and cider, and yet that's under... And yet we're not defining it. Would that make sense that cider should be added in there as well?
Like I said, a lot of these are piggybacking off of the state of Kansas definitions. And the state of Kansas actually didn't mention cider in their microbrewery definitions. But I'd be happy to add that in ours so it's very clear.
Or maybe in the brewery part of it, you can add a note that says if we're mentioning beer, we're also intending to mention cider as well. Somewhere there were references that both would be treated equally. And I'm not enough of a word smith to know exactly where it should be added.
I think what I would recommend is, in the definition for a microbrewery, I would add, "Microbrewery means a brewery licensed by the state of Kansas to manufacture, store, and sell domestic beer and or cider."
That would make sense to me. All right. Question is, and I had to look back. It was amazing what I had to look up to figure out what in the hill. P and P was, you know, because I couldn't remember what the heck it was. So, in the commercial highway, we had permitted in an overlay, I'm assuming. We had. What overlay was that? I mean, I don't... And another question for you is, when Transport Brewery opened over there, I don't remember anything. Talk about parking, and I'm not sure where their parking is. And yet we're asking that the parking be... They're also in town square as well as pedestrian zone. So they're in both those zones. Okay. And I thought, I thought what was behind Commerce, the old Commerce Bank, I thought that was private parking, privately owned, but...
Cost access.
Cost access. Okay. All right. Right here.
Any other questions about the definitions? So I just wanted to go over the state liquor laws really quickly. For microbreweries, they must produce 160,000 barrels a year annually, up to 100,000 gallons of hard cider annually is their limitation on cider production. And they are not considered a retailer or manufacturer. So I'm curious what they do consider them. But they're definitely part of both of those things in my mind. But they are kind of their own animals. Micro distilleries are up to 50,000 gallons of spirits annually, and they're also not considered a retailer or manufacturer. Farm wineries. So we're just calling our term winery, but the state actually calls it a farm winery. It can be on a farm or not, I guess. But they're allowed to produce up to 100,000 gallons of wine annually, and they manufacture wine from their own grapes or grapes from another vineyard. And they look just as picturesque as that picture. And vineyards have 100 or more vines. And what's interesting about vineyards is they may purchase wine at a wholesale from any Kansas farm winery that was made from the vineyard's grapes. So they can buy back the wine that's made from their grapes. Separation requirement. So we talked about this very briefly earlier in the presentation and kind of at length in the staff report. We do want to define how we measure that separation requirement. The state actually has a sort of weird way of measuring it where it's basically wall-to-wall from a church, but wall-to-property line from a school. So it's not consistent. And the state regulation says that by ordinance, we can actually adopt a different way of measuring it or adopt a different separation requirement. If we wanted to make it 300 feet, or 100 feet, or zero feet, they give the city the authority to do that by ordinance. And since these text amendments will be passed through the ordinance, this is our mechanism to sort of bundle all of these related regulations together. So by, like I said earlier, defining our core commercial district, we can have the ability to talk about that separation requirement within our split wording district. So, what we are going to use as our measurement for separation is a single straight line from front door to front door. And this will apply to anywhere else in our code where the measurement process is vague. So if we have a separation for any other use, any other use, it's a sort of a catch-all that that's going to be our default measurement because right now our code doesn't give us that measure to conduct measurements into all other instances as well. Overall clarification here for this ordinance. Obviously, if there's any other way of measuring that's specified, we would go by another measuring. So if there's anything otherwise specifically mentioned in city regulations, county regulations, or state regulations, we follow those. But when in doubt, this would be the default method of measurement. 90% sorry, my answer. But it's... By this measure, Matt, we would be... That... Would you be... Would you be more comfortable with a wall-to-wall measurement from the closest wall to the closest wall?
Mr. Chairman.
Please.
I think wall-to-wall is legitimate, but I would also include with that some way to define a wall, per se, as an enclosed area for the consumption of alcohol, which takes in your patios and such.
So if we did property line to property line, what is that? What if you do a boundary, you know, property line 200 feet with there? I don't know. I don't know.
No, I agree 100%. If we're talking about those specifically, the measurement ought to be from them, which would be their boundary.
So the KSA does give some level of clarity to that. In your staff report, in page five, kind of in the middle, it says, "No microbrewery, micro distillery, or farm winery shall be issued when the premises is located within 200 feet of any public or parochial..."
Parochial.
...school, or college, or church, except that if any such school, college, or church is established within 200 feet of any licensed premises, after the premises has been licensed, then the premises shall be eligible for the location. So, except... So it doesn't really mention home acres or the like.
I have a question. If the county, Johnson County, would change to say we didn't have to require this 30% food sales, would that change how the staff feels about this?
About allowing...
How about the changes we're trying to make? How about the changes we're trying to make?
Yeah, some communities in other areas will adopt their own policy if they want it to be 50-50, and so it's less like a bar and more like a restaurant. If they've not done, or if they want to have, you know, 5% or 10%, it's really hard to track is the issue. And I don't know if we even have to.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Les Smith?
Sorry, I don't mean to beat a dead horse to death, but I'm going to go back to this separation requirement as it pertains to outdoor seating that could include liquor sales. Is that, I mean, we're saying wall-to-wall, is that kind of a catch-all for the parameter of the premises, and that would include it? Yeah, and I just want to ratchet that down because you were coming earlier, you want to address things that are making the, or the impact, and the impact is exactly that. So I just wanted to clarify.
Commissioner Les, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, thank you.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but should we have, should we like that included in the language when they're talking about that, that outdoor beer gardens that are part of the premises will be included in that footprint? If we add, if we add that into it, then it's very clear to everybody upfront. Does that make sense, Les?
Yes, sir, I agree 100%. I don't know, if you look at Char Bar, I mean, they've got 15,000 feet or something like that. Yeah, okay, thank you. Yes, I agree. It'd be great.
Commissioner John Smith?
I don't know if I should bring this up or not, but how do, does these requirements compare with the other cities?
So I looked into some of our surrounding communities. I looked into a loan park in Olathe specifically, as well as some cities that I've been aware of since looking in Illinois myself. I looked at some comparable regulations for those communities as well. The only one that I found that was really comparable was Olathe. They have some regulations for brew pubs, and they didn't have their own separation requirement, if I recall. I think they just provide the state.
I think these are reasonable, but I'm thinking of business and locations in the cities, or it would have to be different for each city, but we've considered that. It sounds reasonable.
Well, let's see how I can put this so it doesn't sound too flabbergasting, but I think we might consider looking at these with the perspective that the 70-30 might go away this November on a county level. That's the rumor mill, that the county is going to decide this might be a ballot question. So I think we should really consider how it affects how we feel about it. If we're writing these and then going to go rewrite them again, then that seems redundant. And maybe that's the best step to go. Question. Appreciate that, and I don't have a problem with it. I think that's just something we'll keep in mind, and you know what? We don't cost much by the hour to be up here, so if we have to redo it after a November ballot question that may or may not pass, and we don't know, don't know the language in it anyway, then so what? We spend cold January evening up here talking about it again. I don't have a problem with that.
It's about.
Commissioner Willoughby.
To me, it's about that much of this whole discussion because all you do is take it out of that one column and you're done, you know?
Don't have a problem with that, but that's why I wanted to ask staff about it, is if that was going to make a difference in some of the definitions we had. So it doesn't.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Smith.
Do we, so what is the process? Does an establishment have to get a permit from the county first, and then they come to us?
Sorry.
Right?
Yeah.
So if you go state, county, local, they're not going to be able to come here with the license without having, having the 30, 70-30 hanging on them anyway, right? So it seemed to me we should have, require them to get, which I'm sure we do, get that license first and then come to us. It's almost a new point. We can't, we can't make it any more lenient. I don't know if we could make it any tougher, but yeah. Correct. Yeah, so I think it's, I think we're, we almost have that mandated on us for right now.
May I clarify something?
Please.
Mark pointed out, and I think listening to your conversation, the table that shows transport and survey in the beginning of the PowerPoint here, I just want to clarify that that table, that alcohol versus food sales, the 70-30, that's not part of what the code that is that we're proposing. That's the county code. So we're not proposing to enforce the code that mandates how much of the food sales there are.
Right, but that is determined by the county, by Johnson County?
Correct.
Okay.
So I just want to clarify, I think, were you saying earlier that we might be in conflict if they get rid of that, but we still have it?
No, I was wanting to make sure because it doesn't seem to be, it would be any big deal for the changes we're making, that if the county said there would be no requirement for food sales, that it wouldn't disrupt what we're doing here. And it, and I didn't think it did, but.
Yeah.
Staff is much more, yeah, you're a hell of a lot smarter than I am. That's what I'm trying to say.
Well, I think you just have to keep in mind, if the microbreweries didn't have a food requirement, most of them probably would still have some type of food because when you go to get a drink, you probably want to eat something. And I know other places that don't have the 30% requirement, they'll let you order in food, so, you know, you can get something delivered, you can bring your own food. So there's always kind of this natural pairing of a drink and food in some cases. So keep that in mind, too.
One quick question. I know that we just had a special use permit for a.
Commissioner Montgomery.
I'm just a little confused, this, on the 70-30 thing, do we even reference that in our ordinances or not?
We don't.
Okay.
Because it's already handled by the county, and some of, like, the number of barrels and gallons, those are already handled by the state. So in order to make our code really easy and really clear and not in conflict with those numbers, we just didn't even.
Okay.
Because I don't think we really care to have a different standard.
Yeah, so if the county changes it, we're going to be, you know, there's nothing we're going to have to do.
Yep.
Because we don't even get into that.
Nope.
That was kind of my point that comes down to us anyway.
Any further question for staff or any further discussion? If not, then do we need to table the rest of this to the next meeting, which is May? When, or you think?
We would just close this meeting because we would have a brand-new public hearing in May.
I'm sorry?
We would close this meeting because we would have a brand-new public hearing in May.
Okay, do we need to authorize a public hearing? We need to. We need to have a motion and a vote to, for a public hearing on May? Just carry these to your back pocket. May 6th? So which would, would be a public hearing on the text amendments for this and anything So would anyone care to make a motion? Commissioner Wise?
I'll make a motion that we hold a public hearing to review the proposed text amendments to the zoning ordinance for liquor-related land uses for staff recommendations on May 6th.
Is there a second? Commissioner John Smith?
Second.
There's a motion and a second for a public hearing on text amendments to the zoning ordinance for liquor-related land uses on May the 6th? Any further discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposing, aye? Motion carried, thank you. That would put us into other business. Staff have, have anything for the commissioners?
I just wanted to ask really quickly if you all liked the format of the staff report, if it was easy to read and having the tables and some graphics in there was handy, because I think that's sort of the direction.
Yes, yeah.
I liked it, other than I had to get out these old books. I just, do the new people even get these old thick books, the thick books with all that stuff in it? All the comprehensive plan and all that stuff?
Yeah, I have one.
Do the new people ever get one of those? I mean, I had to spend a lot of time looking because I could not figure out what NLP was. So, and the one thing is, is I figured it out and I found some other interesting things in there, but I really like you referencing the old way it was put in there, not just the new wording, but the old wording in there. And honestly, it was so frustrating because I've gotten so old that I can't remember things, that those references on this graph and stuff, if you'd be sure and spell that out.
Okay. On which, the map?
On, no, no, as a matter of fact, I did have another question for you. So on the proposed tax agreement, on the zoning district, so in other words, waste management landfill can put a brewery in out there if they want?
You bet. Use methane, gas.
Brewery or a distillery. They're distilling out natural gas out there, but.
Or you can have dump or.
It's on TI, so it would be a special use.
Oh, yeah, it'd be special, all right. That is true. Sorry, I forgot to bring that up earlier.
Picture of the map in the presentation.
Yeah, okay. I'm surprised you didn't give us an invitation tomorrow afternoon to community development, the apartment deal? Aren't you having that tomorrow?
I got an email, an email earlier or late this afternoon.
So we are invited. Oh, yeah, you haven't read my emails. Okay, so does the commission have anything else for the staff? Yes? Commissioner Brayley?
Thank you, sorry, guys. Follow-up to Doug, and the question I asked last, two weeks ago about those cars parking at the fire station, did you find out? Okay, okay. Just let other commissioners know, so the former NAC bar, car sales place out there at, what is that, St. Edeline? I just happened to be driving by the fire station and noticed that all of a sudden there's a lot of cars kind of parked in and around the parking lot on the fire station side, and I was just curious as to whether we've worked out an agreement with them to allow their staff to park in city parking for the fire department because we have the spots, and if that is in fact what's happening. So I just asked Doug to look into that. Okay, yeah. And I'm just curious, does that with us come with any kind of liability if they're parking their cars there? Okay, thank you, Doug.
Anything else for the staff? Commissioner Les Smith? I'm glad you're here. It's always a pleasure to see you here.
Thank you. I feel the same.
With these commission meetings. Oh, boy, you guys are going to win tonight, I know, but anyway, if you haven't watched any of the British Parliament doing this, it is just like.
Fascinating, actually.
Why would you think so? It just, gosh, it's amazing.
So how do they, how do they make a motion to adjourn?
You know what? I haven't heard that. I honestly hadn't, or I would have.
I say that we just, we all wait until we see it again and then make that motion the way they do.
All right, then.
Good night.
Then, then I would suggest, since I can make this, we're in recess till May 6th? I formally put this commission in recessed until May 6th.
No, you're having a big meeting on the 15th, you can't do that.
Excuse me, until April 15th.
Mr. Chairman.
Not the 15th, the 15th is a Monday.
Yep.
Uh, we'll all be doing taxes that night, we won't be here anymore.
Mr. Chairman, before you get us all in trouble, I move.
I do not acknowledge you, sir. Would anyone else like to ask permission to talk? Let's see, there we go.
I'll second the motion to adjourn, how about that?
Hold it, we didn't have a motion. I didn't hear a motion. He wasn't acknowledged as being able to speak, Commissioner Wise. Now, we wish, we should be sure, and remember, we're in commission meeting here, so we're discussing business that's before the commission. Commissioner Montgomery. Well, Commissioner Montgomery, thank you very much.